Okay, I would like to call to order the Village of Lansing Planning Board Meeting of Monday, March 11th, ordered at 7:06 PM. If you do have a cellphone or anything, whether you're online or in person, please remember to dial it. Also, Pat Gillespie is not here this evening, so I will appoint Yamila as a voting number for tonight only. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for February 27th, 2024. There's not much around. I know people made edits. Did anybody else have anything they wanted to add to them?
The only edits I got were from Lorraine.
You got them right.
No, Pat's was, "I don't have any yet."
But Pat sent you mine. Pat sent you mine, right?
Yeah. It was like, I know I saw an email from Pat about it. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the February 27th, 2024 minutes.
Motion by Yamila.
Second.
Second by Lorraine. All in favor?
I'd stay.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the public comment period.
This is an opportunity for anybody to bring up an item that is not already on the agenda for this evening.
Susan Ainsley, she brings for the Board of Trustees.
Hearing other comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
Question by Lisa.
I'll second.
Second by Jim. All in favor?
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, continuation of the public hearing for special permit number 2024-4740.
Northeast Pediatrics, located at Graham Road West, tax parcel number 47.1-1-17.12, is proposing to construct additional parking spaces for their facility. As per Village Code Sections 145-42, Flex C1 and 145-58B2, a special permit is required.
Want to give us an update, Mike? I know that everybody got some emails and stuff, but we always love to hear you.
Tell us what the email said.
You wouldn't love to hear me talk.
There you go.
Hope Anderson's here. And I spoke with Hope over the last couple of weeks. She has sent a letter, which I quoted to you, along with a tentative site plan. On the site plan, the total number of units as per the site plan is 14 units, added to the original 21. So that requires, it requires seven more units for that property. And that's about where we stand today.
Would seven be the short? Like, what's short from the required?
Yeah. There's an additional seven units that needed, whether it be on the site, which would be very tough to do, or tree bank, or whatever. It's up to you guys to do whatever you want to do from there.
So I have some thoughts, and I know other folks on the board probably have some thoughts. Is there anything you want to share? I know we got your letter, regal letter, obviously, but anything you wanted to share before we discuss, and maybe have questions for you?
No, basically, the letter kind of concludes where we're at in this. Kind of been, it's been a lot of, sorry about the drawing with our tentative trees, but it's, you know, we didn't want to have somebody pay somebody, actually, to come in and do that and tell me, you know, exactly what's going on, we're going to do it. It's a very expensive project.
Yep. So I typically let others share their thoughts first, but I wanted to share some thoughts that I kind of brought up at the last meeting and discussed over the weekend a little bit. But so I think that, that is a site that, so there's a lot, the tree law that we have is new in the village. This is really only, I think, the second time that it's come up. The first was a property.
I think the bee, the bee property, the beekeepers.
Bee property, oh, because that was a special permit.
This makes probably the third.
Okay, so maybe the third.
But it's the first.
It's the first commercial property, though, that this has come up on. And one of the other items later on on the agenda is for us to discuss the tree law. There's some edits that we want to make to it anyway. Some of it's language, some of it's, you know, a bunch of different things. All that aside, I would never look at that property and say, wow, you know, there's really not a lot of trees there. It's like a building clunked in the middle of a, you know, a lot, and, you know, there's nothing there. I think there's some kind of unique things there, too, because of the size of the building and the kind of service that it is, the kind of, you know, commercial, you know, business that it is. They need more parking than you would find, you know, maybe, you know, something, you know, something different. So they've got that kind of weird slope in the back that limits what they can do. I think if we required them to put all the trees in to come up to that unit, I actually don't think it would look good, which I know is weird to say, but I just don't think it would. I think it would almost be like us looking at it and saying, oh, look, there's eight square feet there, not near eight other square feet, maybe they can wedge a tree in there. So if you look at, so I think that, I think that that number for them isn't realistic. You know, cost aside, forget about the cost. I just don't think it's realistic to require that there. If you take a look at the tree law, if you can't meet that minimum requirement, it says that you can pay into the tree bank. The money and the funds that go into the tree bank are to be used for other planting plans and, you know, other planting things in the village. And in lieu of that, they can also be used for other climate smart initiatives that offset carbon footprint. If you look at the roof of Northeast Pediatrics, they've got a bunch of solar panels up there that are already offsetting their carbon footprint, which I think is admirable. And they did that before they even came here. Do you know how long those have been there? I don't think any of us even know they were, knew they were out there.
About eight years. They're paying for themselves now, finally.
Right.
Both of our facilities have them. The other place up on Transfer Road actually is a, has a farm because it's a tiny building, so it couldn't hold them. So both buildings have solar.
But so, all, you know, considering all those factors, one of the other things that the planning board can do is we can't waive the, we can't waive the.
Minimum density or alternate.
The minimum density for that. However, what we can do is we can reduce the amount that would have to be paid in for, into the tree bank for the seven trees that they would be short. I like their planting plan. So I would, you know, we got a number from John Courtney, and I think that, you know, for, for how much it would cost to plant a tree, the cost of the tree and planting it, it's not broken apart. But I would suggest that we figure out a way to, you know, help them with that, given their, the unique characteristics of their property and the fact that there's solar panels up there. I think that that's the right thing to do. I also don't think that that sets precedent for any other property. I think that, you know, we would consider all these same factors if we looked at another commercial project coming in, you know, to, to do something similar. Those are my thoughts, but I want to hear your thoughts, too. You want to go, Lorraine?
I totally agree with you. I mean, I've driven by their property like a million times in my lifetime, and it's always very well kept. And I looked at all of the shrubbery and the trees that you wanted to put in, and I think anything more than this, it would look like a jungle. I mean, there's just, they barely have room for parking, like, to put in any more trees. I mean, what they've, the plan that they have. And I don't know a lot about these, the different variety. I did look them all up. I guess I was curious about the tulip trees and how big those get. The location, and I wanted to ask Yamila, because usually she's already on top of this.
They're very slow growers.
They, oh, it's a slow grower, okay.
They are.
Very what?
Slow growing. But they're big. Oh, no, when I looked them up, they looked really big, and I wondered how they would look on that, that slant there, yeah. But anyway, yeah, so I'm in agreement with you. I mean, they're good citizens, so.
Jim, you have thoughts?
Not trying to, you know, make it look easy, but I agree with what you said as well. I mean, I think what you said makes sense. It's a unique, it's a unique property. There's only so much they can do. And the underlying purpose of the tree law is aesthetics. And if literal compliance with the trees would be detrimental to the aesthetics, and it's not really feasible, then should find some way to, because they're, they're obviously, you know, making an effort to try and get some more growth in there. And as you pointed out, they've eight years, it really was eight years, but, you know, have made an effort to reduce their carbon footprint. So, yeah, I pretty much agree with what you said.
Yes, sir.
Well, I don't agree that it's just for aesthetics. I also believe that it's good for climate, carbon, sequester, the whole, that shade, keeping the temperature down, so. But aesthetics, as we, Jim and I have always said, is pretty important. My only, well, some of the, I know, I will yield the floor to Yamila, because, for the example, the arborvitae, I know the deer just love those. They'll, they'll just be gone overnight. Plus, I think if that's, basically, that's, as you're coming down the road, right, that shields the proposed new parking slots, as I'm reading this map?
No, no.
Do I have it backwards?
Yeah, so, yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, this is them over here, the boxwoods.
It's boxwoods here. The arborvitae would be.
Where that, oh, by Target.
Yeah.
Which, maybe the deer wouldn't climb those rocks.
Right.
But I still, I'm not sure that's the right choice. Okay, because I was gonna say, it's also kind of big, but I do like to have shrubs in front of parking garage, because at night, during the winter, the headlights, people turn them on, and it's, it's just not good. Other than that, I too think, I'm not a super fan of ornamental grasses, because if you've ever had them, they're kind of hard to maintain, actually, but they do serve a purpose, and I know they do suck up water, if they're the right variety, so I don't know. But that's not the part of the tree thing. I think, other than that, as long as the, I think the arborvitae should be reconsidered. But I do basically agree with what people have pretty much said here. It is a very different, you can't make it a lot, and you don't want to just cram it for the sake of cramming it with the trees.
Yeah. I agree with a lot of what Lorraine said. Looking at the tree law, really, I think the, the primary goal, I mean, it is definitely for aesthetics, but it is for ecosystem services. Like, you know, the trees do a really good job of taking up waters, because you've got all that water on your, that slopes down. It's for habitat, it's for shade, it's for cooling a parking lot and the albino effect and all that kind of stuff. So, so to that end, I agree. If we tried to fit every single thing that, that is owed by the tree law, it wouldn't look right unless you probably hired someone who was really skilled at placing things on your site. So, I mean, it's doable, but it would probably be more leaning with shrubs than with all the trees, because you couldn't fit that many trees. It would be more shrub heavy than tree heavy. To that end, though, I would like to say that because, one of the things I look at is the functions of the green on your property, one of the things I look at is, like, how much water do these things take up, right? So how much does it help with stormwater management? Can we make, can we make more of our town a sponge for stormwater? What does it do for habitat? You have almost none, none of these are, only a couple of them are native plants. So the things like our butterflies, our birds can't get anything from these. Like, they don't eat things from the arborvitae and stuff like that. So there, there are definitely some substitutions that can be made that would help, like, function it, make it function better for you, and still, you know, kind of do what you're doing here without cramming it full.
We do have a lot of perennials for butterflies and for the bugs and the monarchs and stuff, which tend to come to our office.
Yeah.
Our arborvitae, after we spoke with the landscape guy, he, the reason we chose them is because they're windlocked to help protect our asset right now, which is going to be the parking lot, the building, plus thing, Target, and they're fast growing. He said they would wrap them because our deer, we do have a family that lives in the backyard, so, but they tend to, probably target up lilies.
Yeah. Even, even wrap, though, because, I mean, we tend to wrap arborvitae, like, in the winter, but they'll, if you have a family of deer there, you will have spent a lot of money for deer food if you put in arborvitae. So it might be, it might be worth maybe pushing back and asking if there's something else that you can put in that would be a little less likely to get browsed by deer, because otherwise what will happen is you'll end up with these, like, little sticks that are gonna go. Yeah, they, it looks like, you know, a lollipop. It's a stick, you know, four feet up, and then, then you get your arborvitae shape above that, and so it won't do the job of, of being a windblock for you, and it won't do the job of, of blocking headlights either. So do you have someone who you're working with?
Yes, and where those are, the headlights aren't affected because it's on the, the Target side, which is very raised up.
Right, yeah.
And, but yeah, we do have a landscaper that we're working with.
Okay.
I mean, we've done the ornamental grasses that we have there, which are quite a few, because they are salt resistant and deer resistant, and they don't need a lot of water, you know, for summertime, and they've grown beautiful.
Yeah.
And tall.
They certainly can. It depends on the species, too.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, I would say rethink your arborvitae. And the one thing I'm not quite sure of, it's, it's hard to tell on this, are these all what you're proposing to add, or is this some of this existing?
Those are what we want to add. I think there's just one existing one on there.
Okay.
Or maybe, I don't know.
I think the green highlighted is the additions.
Yeah, so.
Oh, okay, I see, okay.
Right, the, the boxwoods by the new parking spots, the boxwoods in front of the building, the tulip tree in the back, the ornamental grasses kind of on the side.
Oh, and the boxwoods in the front.
Arborvitae over by the Target side, and then that sugar maple also there. I think those are the new, the new things.
And the tulip in the back.
Yeah, and the tulip in the back, I didn't say that.
Yeah, but not getting away from any of those, which mine is, which is also.
A big deal.
I appreciate everybody saying deer resistant versus proof, by the way, because they'll eat everything.
They'll eat everything, yeah.
Yeah.
And then the other thing, too, is your, your site is really heavy with boxwoods. You've got 30 boxwoods going in, which is, you know, great for the, for that portion, you know, right by your, where your parking is. The one thing I caution you about boxwoods is that if they, if the sun hits them a lot, and you've got a lot of them.
We already have about 15 boxwoods that are in there.
They can often smell like cat pee.
Well, I thought there was a new arborvitae.
There is a new arborvitae.
I will, I will say, too, that's one of the things, I never, ever have them, because I've been told.
I've never noticed that at my house.
Yeah, no.
Oh, it's pretty, yeah.
It's pretty noticeable, depending on the varieties.
If you're sensitive to it.
Yeah.
But I would say, I would really ask that maybe you get a second opinion about your landscaping from somebody who's a little bit more well-versed in using natives and using a variety of plants, because one of the things that's happening, too, is like, there's a new, there's a new boxwood fly that has been kind of invading our area. That's really bad. And so if you have a monoculture of boxwoods, and that fly continues to kind of run through our boxwood population here, you're gonna have 30 plants that are gonna look really scraggly, you're gonna have little flies buzzing around them all the time, and won't ever be really healthy. And one of the things about not having a monoculture is that, you know, so if a fly attacks one thing, you've got another plant next to it that does not get affected by that. So having a variety of things is always better for, like, your pocketbook, and better for the health of, of this garden space, and better for the ecosystem services.
So Yamila, I know that in the past I had seen a list that maybe to look at to see there's the extension service that might help you have a discussion with your landscapers, and if you see something that looks attractive, because there are just so many, you know, when we first started the tree law, it was with Maguire, and it, they were hemlocks with the adle, there, there are just so many problems with trees these days that, yeah, that you don't want to waste your money.
Yeah. I mean, boxwoods, we are going because we have experience with the boxwoods. They're very salt resistant, they're deer resistant, and it must be a different variety, because I've never smelled.
Yeah, some of them don't, I'm told. I don't know.
And they work well in between when we, our perennials come up and the annuals planted, you know, we get mummies and stuff put in there between.
Yeah, I love boxwood. I plant them all the time.
So there are, there are other ones in there, too.
Yeah, just as long as there's like a little bit, there's got some variety, because I'm in the book with the hemlocks, with like, anytime you have lots of one thing, you make yourself really vulnerable. And I know that specifically boxwood is one that we're looking at becoming more vulnerable in the near future.
Mike, it's Natalie, anything you want to add?
I think you addressed the points really well as to considerations that were applying to Northeast Peds specifically, that they, their lot size, existing tree, the planting plan presented, the solar panels that they're, already have on their roof, so that those things should be taken in consideration when determining the value to be paid into the tree bank. And I think those are metrics that we can use also moving forward, not necessarily to come to the same conclusion, but to discuss and think about.
Yeah.
Mike, anything you want to add?
Just with the solar panels, just kind of, this is a unique situation, so pointing out the solar panels makes a big difference.
And are you guys on heat pumps, or are you on natural gas?
Our building is split in three, so we're on all of it.
Oh, really?
Okay. So it sounds like, then, and anybody can speak up if they disagree, but it sounds like, other than maybe some of the varieties of things in there, that maybe we should make an exception. I think the, the dollar amount that would have to be paid into the, into the tree bank, and, you know, this was kind of referenced in the letter, not the value, but that it would be high enough where it would be, you know, prohibitive to this project, is, you know, shy of $9,000. I think if people are okay with, you know, exercising our ability to, to lower that dollar amount, given everything else, I would recommend a bit that we lower that dollar amount. And, you know, I'm kind of of the mind with everything going on there, and I like the, you know, short of species, which is not my, you know, my strong suit, obviously, but, you know, my kids have gone there for years, too, so they're all the time. And I think it looks nice, I think these are great additions to it. You know, my recommendation for the rest of the board was maybe we just want to think about dropping it down to a dollar for this, you know, in this case.
To $1?
Yeah.
I would hesitate to do something quite that generous.
I don't, what other, that's just my, that's my, my opinion. I don't know what other people have for, for thoughts on things.
What was your proposal?
$1, just.
Oh, $1.
$1.
I thought that's what the mayor referenced, I wasn't sure.
I haven't talked to any about this, so.
What did John say would be the cost of eight? For example, when we do our tree planting, we provide someone in the, you know, to have two trees in their yard. I don't know what the value of that is.
This lowest figure is $1,250.
Yeah.
A tree.
A tree.
$1,250 per tree.
You mean $1,250 or $12.50?
$1,250.
Oh, wow. Is that for the tree and the planting?
Yes. That would be.
That's all.
That would be everything.
Assuming that it's like a, a good-sized caliber tree, so.
I think it was a two-inch.
I, you know, honestly, I was sort of thinking more in the neighborhood of, if we take a tree and put it somewhere else, that we should be able to do that for $250, I would think.
Do you have the, do you have the, Yamila, you would probably know best, you know, the cost. So this figure was, I think, based off like a two-inch caliber tree.
That's insane, because, I mean, sorry, excuse me, but, I mean, we're paying, we were, from two separate places, $4,800 and $5,000 to plant everything that I have on the porch. That much money for a two-inch tree, I mean.
$250, you mean, is high?
We're.
$1,250. Oh, no, $1,250.
Yeah, I guess, we're struggling right now, because, I mean, we're looking at $83,000 to expand, and have our parking lot repaid because of all the flood damage, and to make it look decent, and then to add $5,000 on top of that to, to do the planting, which then, because we wanted to put a garden in the backyard, which is now, we've kind of on the table, I just.
Yeah, well, I think $1,250 is, that's what I'm saying. I think when, if I were to apply to our village tree planting, I get $75 towards a tree.
Yep.
So I'm thinking, yeah, $1,250, it seems high to me, too.
Yeah, generally, I would estimate, I estimate triple the cost of the tree to get it in.
Okay.
So like, if you're spending $100 on a tree, you triple, that's 300, so it's $100 plus 300 for labor, so, like, when I do my estimates, I estimate $400 for a tree, for a $100 tree. So it's like, like a third of what, what we were talking about. And here's the thing, I really want you to have this, and I really want you to have it and be, have it be good, and have it be a legacy for you guys for a long time. And the idea of $1,250 for a tree and having a $9,000 bill on top of everything else seems, seems like it's just not gonna work. So I would love to think about how else we can approach it while still holding on to the idea that we have this tree law that we're, we have to apply in some way. I mean, like, I'm gonna throw out some crazy ideas here. You know, what if, okay, so you're putting in these things, and what if instead of paying $9,000 into a tree bank, we say, okay, well, you need X number of points, can you purchase those trees and give them away to families from your practice that can't afford to put landscape in their property?
We're struggling with being able to afford to put that on our property.
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
It's possible, yeah.
It is a lot.
The other thing that I had thought of, too, is whether phased planting, so that you could.
Which is what our plan was when we started talking about putting the driveway in, was phased planting.
Because that way, your expenses would be spread out.
Yes, so we'll put some next year.
Yeah, and I, I would think that that would be something.
I think that would be worked into the special permit.
Yes, exactly.
But all these don't have to be put in this summer.
Exactly.
No, no.
Yeah. The other thing, too, that, that we talked about is that, like, when you, when you have your landscape person come in to do their thing, it's usually like, it's only a little bit more expensive to put another tree in, as opposed to a lot more expensive to, like, hire someone to come in at a different time to do it. And, you know, one of the things that we've talked about is how, you know, we have all these Bradford pears on our, on our drive here along, along Trip Hammer, and there's at least four, if not five, that are either all the way dead or mostly dead. So I wonder if, like, if your person is not charging you $1,250 per tree, if maybe we can credit you for trees that are planted to replace the dead ones that we have here within, like, a couple of blocks of your office.
But I, I think the.
Replace two of those trees on our street.
Not, not the one on your street, I'm talking about here on Trip Hammer, between, between here and, like, you know, all the way down, there's a whole bunch of dead ones that need to replace.
Yeah, those are, those are street, those are street trees that if there were, if there were funds in the tree bank, we would use those funds probably.
Right, that's, there is an identifying.
That's what I, I think the point is, is they're saying they don't have the cash to outlay for this money. But I, I will say that I feel we have to have something for the tree bank. I just think that's the precedent that I could see. I'm totally flexible with the amount, and I think $1,250 is certainly excessive. I, I just, what came to my mind was $250, but I'm certainly open to, maybe it's only 75, because that's what a tree is for the, for our low, I, whatever, whatever anybody else thinks.
No, and I, I agree, well, here's, if I can just say what I'm thinking, because it's totally different than some of the other ideas, but Mike saying a dollar, I mean, I totally understand, that's a really goodwill gesture for, for a business that's been in the community since 1964. I read your letter. They've been good tenants, they've been there a long time. And, and think of the things that they've had to deal with around their property. I mean, that Graham Road West has got potholes in it and has potholes in it for years, the eyesore, like she mentioned, across the street, not having enough parking, can't even get rent parking across the street and have to go down one, like, down a block and over.
Which introduces safety issues.
Oh, right, I mean, these things, and they've been good tenant, they've, you know, been good tenants all these, all these years, and have to deal with the things around them. But so I think, taking that into consideration, but also what Lisa's saying, is reducing the amount. I mean, $1,250 is ridiculous, but, I mean, to make it a minimum, even $50, maybe.
Like I said, but I do think it's important that we have put this law in place for a reason, and we're trying, we are working our way through it, and you are our first commercial person to come to us, but I think it's important to, if we really believe in this code, which I personally do, to have some sort of charge just to move this forward, taking all this stuff into consideration as we're looking at our tree law.
But like, this suggested a minimum, a min.
Yeah, I, I would, I would go with a, a very minimal amount, so that we have it in the books that you've done a very minimal amount for this.[1758.04] And honestly, I would rather you spend more money on making your site have more native shrubs and have more shrubs that do ecosystem services and handle your water than plopping in, you know, boxwood in our property, than putting in, paying all that money into the tree bank. So for instance, if it was going to be, you know, say, you know, $2,000 that you would give the tree bank, I would rather you give us, you know, $250 and use the rest to actually get somebody who's, to advise you about the kinds of plantings that would actually make your site really function very, very well and long into the future.
So what's next?
Well, you need to just, well, the tree planting plan has to be approved.
Correct.
And you need to determine a dollar figure.
Yep.
So.
So I think as far as the tree planting plan, though, it sounds like we're all in agreement, other than maybe some slaps of species.
That can be a condition.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. If the amount can't be a condition, or if there is no amount, whatever you're going to do, that you probably have to decide at night and then night, correct?
Well, we should.
You should. I mean, you can keep it.
It's been open long enough.
Yeah, I think.
I wanted to get you moving.
I have time to.
Well, especially with timing, you know, we're moving into that time of year for not just, you know, plantings and things like that, but also, you know, driveway type work.
Yeah. Cap, we go past this, we won't be on a meeting deadline.
Right.
Yep. So let's focus on the amount.
Yeah. So, Emile, if you, if you factor in like, you know, the calculation you did, that would bring the cost down to like 300-ish, we'll say, dollars a tree.
Yeah.
Right, if you multiply that out, you know, by the.
It's not a fancy tree.
Right, yeah, you know, that puts you up to that $1,200.
Yeah.
The mark. 300 sounds high to me, but that's just me.
How many trees?
Seven.
Seven units.
Seven units, yeah, it's seven units, so.
I mean, I would, I would be fine with, say, charging, say, like, $100 a unit. And I'd like to see a planting plan that is a little bit more sensitive to native plants and ecosystem services. And with variety, so that when something, when some bug comes in, it's not all wiped out.
So if you say 100 per unit, you're saying $700? I still think that's a little high, given the situation, but.
Yeah, I'm okay to go down, but again, like, the less we charge there, the more I'm going to scrutinize the planting plan.
What do you think?
I told you what I thought, $250.
You mean $250 per tree or total?
A tree or for all?
For all.
Yeah.
I didn't hear you.
$250.
Total.
He was suggesting, as Lorraine said, is a goodwill gesture, a dollar.
Yeah.
And I'm saying, okay, I can't go with the dollar, but I think $250.
I think we have to do something more than completely nominal, but also be very, be very lenient.
Can we be a little bit, whatever we do, can we make sure it's a multiple of seven so that we have like a dollar amount per point, like 210?
I think when you get to that, that is more precedent setting in my mind to be like, oh, we're going to go down to a minimum of 30 bucks a tree, then people are like, okay, we'll just, well, you did that before. I think if it's just a dollar figure that we determine, keeping in mind that we want to get to like a reasonable amount, it's a little bit less arguable that it's precedent setting, in my opinion.
Okay. Then I'd rather not set a precedent for a low amount, so.
Well, no, I'm just saying, if you say, okay, if it's divided by seven, and be like, oh, well, you did 30 bucks a tree here, when we can say 250 just felt.
Okay.
I mean, it's subjective.
Yeah.
But it was just.
What was the dollar amount that you suggested initially?
I said, why don't we just have it be like $100 per unit? So that would be 700 total.
Which, and I guess we're backing away from focusing. I was just trying to get an order of magnitude of what your suggestion was.
What do you think, Lorraine, thoughts on that?
With Lisa, I mean, the lower, the lowest that we can go, but we do need to do something because we're setting a precedent.
What do you think about $250, Jen?
If the board's okay with that, I'm all right with it. Another number was 500, but I'm sure that the applicant would prefer the 250. I don't, I'm not going to gag over 250.
Yeah, I would be able to go with that, but like I said, I would love to see more of a better, a better planting plan.
Is that something Hope that you think you can, you know, you would have to, you know, only put $250 into the tree bank to offset those seven tree units that you're short? With the, with the condition that you go back and speak with the landscape architect or whoever you're dealing with and try to get some more, some more native, more friendly plants, species into that.
Other than our values, which, because we're kind of set on keeping the aesthetics like where we are with the boxwoods and how in each season we have different annuals and prenudes that come up, and that's the very form of our building.
Right, but you could mix in like Alex Glabra, and that would do the similar thing that boxwood does, but it's a native plant, and it actually has like berries in the winter and stuff like that. So there's, there are lots of different ways that can be achieved.
I understand.
What do you think about that? Is that something?
I think that's fine, I do, I just, I'm, yeah, that's fine.
And can, can we approve this, or do we need something more official?
Well, if you want to approve it, then it proves that it's written.
No, we can't approve that.
You can approve.
I think, so I thought that we needed like an official.
I mean, like I said, it can all be a condition that, you know, as per what the village says, the approval of a site plan by either a professor, some type of professional landscaper or whatnot, which you do have already, but it'll have to be something a little more elaborate. And you were, you were aware of that when we talked, it would have to be probably better than that.
Right, like you said, but you didn't want to move, yeah, you didn't want to move forward until you knew what our feelings were yet, totally get them.
These were just things that Pete was throwing down when we were talking, because we had a very short time to go, because it was the meeting and then getting them out there and stuff. So he was just throwing things out that I really, I would like sugar mayonnaise, and I would also like the tulip tree out back, but, I mean.
Love tulip tree.
Everything else, he was just, you know, kind of running like fast. And my answer is looking at where we are at budget wise, because we don't have much of a budget left to provide to meet all of these, the criteria that everybody's looking at. I agree that a lot of it should be, you know, native plants and stuff, which we try to be very much aware of. But like I said, I didn't want to pay another person to come in and then have it be.
Something we didn't want at all.
Right, yeah.
Exactly.
Well, you know, you, I think you understand, I think we've talked it through pretty thoroughly here. I think you get a drift.
I just want to finish part of this.
And then it can be a phased plan.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it can be a phased plan.
It can be phased over time, it doesn't all have to happen now.
I would.
Set a condition, probably.
Recommend, as long as you're good with it, Natalie, that you come up with some type of agreement, even though I don't have a resolution for the actual special permit, that we come with some type of agreement so that Hope can get her subcontractor, contractor, especially for pavement, in place at this point, because they're going to be filling up rapidly this, this time of year, so if we could.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I say like, you know, yes, you know, we can make it a condition. Obviously, we don't have the resolution for the special permit tonight. We have the resolution for the, for Seeker that we could do, or we can wait till the next meeting. It doesn't, I don't think it makes much of a difference.
So what can we agree to so they can do what you just said?
As long as we verbally agree that, okay, this is how it's going to be, make up a resolution with the conditions on there, and then that gives Hope the reassurance that, okay, we can schedule somebody.
All right.
I'd be very happy to do that.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with that.
Me, too.
Okay.
And then we'll bring, you know, once you, you know, you've got somebody that's going to, on their schedule or whatnot, then we can work through what's going to happen with the types of shrubs or whatever at that point.
The actual.
And if it needs to be phased over, you have two summers or two, or whatever, however that works seasonally, that'll help, you know, with, you know, finances up, sure.
This planning board is going to have to approve the site plan with the planting grant anyways.
So when we drill a solid for brick and two and beat all our happy with it, you guys can be unhappy with it? An informal.
It's unlikely.
Yeah.
I mean, I think if you take back some of the feedback and.
If it looks exactly like this, I don't think it's going to go.
Right, yeah.
But I think if you take some feedback and make a few changes, it'll be amenable to trying to fit the aesthetic that you're hoping to achieve while meeting the desire.
I think it sounds strictly like species, like I think locations and areas and that general idea about what you're trying to do in each area with the things that you're putting there is spot on. It's just right. I think some, some different species would be, like, like Emile mentioned, it would work out better for you, and it would be appreciated by the board. But I think that sounds like, that's the concern from the board is species, not any of the other things.
Like, yeah, number and placement seems good.
Yep.
And I think, you know, if the person they're working with has questions, get a hold of Mike and, you know, he can pass information along to us. We don't have to wait until the, you know, until the next meeting and, you know, in the effort to, you know, not have, to have you keep coming back over and over again. If you need information from us between now and the next meeting, we can provide that to you.
Yeah. And if you.
And comes up with different species or whatever, send me another one just like that. I'll send it to the board and I'll get some feedback. That way, you're not bad, that way you don't come in, not reject it, but out of here, next time, reject it out of here.
You can go home early.
Keep trying, yeah.
Magic eight ball.
Yeah, right.
And if you need to, we have resources in the county, like cooperative extension, you can call the Grow Line, and they literally have lists of, oh, this is a common thing that we plant. Here's a, instead.
Recipes was a list of common things native plants to.
Good.
But boxwoods wouldn't be on there.
They already had boxwoods.
Common use, because they were looking at like salt, temperature, kids walking on them, durability, lifespan, you know.
Kids walking on them, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, those were some of the things that are important to, to our offices, and because a lot of things get walked on, stepped on, picked, you name it.
Can't be poisoned.
It's, I mean, it's tough, we have a tough circumstance, but I mean, are trying to make sure that it looks nice and everything is good.
Thank you for that effort.
Yeah.
Mike, is there any risk in just waiting until the next meeting to do the Seeker?
We might, let's just do it.
Just do it.
Let's do it.
I was going to say, there's no reason to wait.
And Pat saw it last time.
He did see it last time, too, yeah. I think at the last meeting, we were kind of on the same side, so like, do we do this now? Do we do this in the next meeting?
I think.
And we do have the resolution for that, so.
So let's get it out.
We do that before we close the public comment period? Or can we close the public comment period and then do the Seeker? Public hearing, I mean, not public comment period.
You close.
Close the public, okay. Okay. So I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing for special permit number 2024-474. Motion by Emile.
Second.
Second by Lisa. All in favor?
All right.
So we can move on to part two of the short environmental assessment form. I'll read down the, the questions, and if anybody disagrees with me, let me know. One, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations, no or small? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the land, no or small? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community, no or small? Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area, no or small? Will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway, no or small? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities, no? Will the proposed action impact existing, A, public-private water supplies, B, public-private wastewater treatment facilities? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historical, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources, no? Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources, e.g. wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna, no? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems, no?
Yeah, should fix that action.
Yeah, it'll help.
I was just going to say.
Will the proposed, proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health, no? And then we can move on to the resolution, we should have this in front of them. This is the Village Lancing Planning Board Resolution for Seeker Review of Special Permit Number 2024-474, adopted on March 11, 2024. Whereas, A, this matter involves consideration of the following proposed actions, Special Permit Number 2024-474 for the proposal by Northeast Pediatrics LLC, located in 10 Graham Road West, to construct additional parking spaces for the facility as per Village Code Section 145-42.2(c)(1) and 145-58(b)(2), special permit is required. And B, on February 12, 2024, and February 27, 2024, and March 11, 2024, Village Lancing Planning Board will perform the lead agency function for its independent and uncoordinated environmental review in accordance with Article 8 of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law, the State Environmental Quality Review Act. One, determine the proposed action provided for herein as an unlisted action in accordance with Seeker. Two, thoroughly review the short environmental assessment form and any and all other documents prepared and submitted with respect to this proposed action and its environmental review. Three, complete its thorough analysis of the potential relevant areas of environmental concern to determine if the proposed action may have a significant adverse impact on the environment, including criteria identified in NYCRR Section 617.7(c). Four, completed the short EAF. And now there be, and now therefore be resolved as follows. We have two options, we can find a negative declaration or a positive declaration. So I will entertain a motion to find this a negative declaration.
I move that we find the, what is the resolution for Seeker to be, or the Seeker to be a negative declaration?
Motion by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Emile. All in favor?
All right.
Unanimous? Also, I, and so I can sign part, so there's nothing in part three that we have to fill out. That's, we only have to fill that out, but there's something that we found determining that has no negative impact. Okay.
Hey, let me, let me just make sure I have the conditions correct. The conditions, the special permit are going to be approval on the execution of the planning plan, payment to the tree bank of $250, along with our usual ones. Am I misphrasing?
The one with our, what did you just say?
Our usual.
The usual.
I assume there'll be some like, just minor storm or stuff during the, is that it? Yeah, okay, there's nothing else, okay. I wasn't sure if there was disturbance, if you know. Okay.
Not plannings.
So then at the next meeting, work with Mike and your, your crew between now and the next meeting, make sure you're on the agenda for the next meeting. We can get some updates to the, to the species. Also get an official planting plan that the board can review and approve, and we can do that as part of special permit approval at the next meeting. But.
What's the condition?
With the conditions. What's up with the conditions?
With the conditions.
We don't have to approve the planting plan next meeting?
No, no, that could just be a condition of it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think, I think if we have.
If we have more information, at least.
Information on different species that we looked into.
No, it's the urgency of this special permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But at least now you know you can schedule somebody.
All right.
Yes.
First deposit to the tree bank. This is kind of exciting. I know it isn't exciting for you, but it is.
And thanks for working through us, like we mentioned earlier, it's the first commercial property that's triggered the, triggered the new tree law, so. We appreciate it. We appreciate all the help, thanks, thanks for working with us, definitely. Yes.
Twenty seventh, uh, eighth, twenty seventh, I thought.
I'll send you a copy.
Twenty sixth.
Twenty sixth of March, we're both, twenty sixth of March, Tuesday.
Oh, now she's totally confused.
Just come back every night and see.
Every, every Monday and Tuesday, you'll finally catch up with us at one.
It's the last Tuesday of the month.
Thanks, Hope. You can stay if you want, but you don't have to.
She's like, no.
You, too, tonight.
Okay, next item on the agenda is an informal presentation. Mike, is it McCracken or McCracken?
McCracken.
McCracken. Director of Development for Hospitality Restaurant, giving a presentation for developing a Taco Bell establishment at 2301 Trippam Road. Tax parcel number 46.1-5-4.3, formerly occupied by Pizza Hut. Do you want to come up to this podium there? Just, people will be able to hear you better.
Yeah.
If you could stand there in front of the speaker, they'll be able to hear you better. And Mike, did you want to go and pull up any materials?
We've got boards, but if you wanted to put it for the guys sharing online.
We've got a board, yeah.
The only thing I can pull up, the only thing that may.
You sent us something with all this.
It's, yeah.
It's this one.
No, no.
Oh, that one. Oh, yeah. The other one is a full, it was like 18 pages. So I can go in and pull it up if you need to keep the.
Okay.
They may have something for you to, they actually, they have an elevation to show you what it's powered.
We've got some pictures once we go.
Yeah.
Existing Pizza Hut, this one.
Lisa, we might have to get in the car and drive down 13.
I actually sort of did. It's the only way.
And I'm Matt Naparella, Naparella Consulting. I'm a site civil engineer, working with Mr. McCracken and my group. So, once we get into the future phases, I will be working closely with Mike and work to dot our i's and cross our k's.
I'd like to thank everybody here tonight for taking a look at our proposal. We're pretty excited about it. We're proposing to build a 2,650-square-foot restaurant that has 40 seats inside. In this particular restaurant, you won't see it here, but we've had some internal conversations about adding some outdoor seating, if that's allowable. And we haven't even checked the code, but if it's allowable, we'd like to add some extra outdoor seats as well. We don't do it all the time, but this particular site seems to lend itself to it because it's not really on the main road, where it's kind of surrounded by hills, and so it might be a little bit better atmosphere for outdoor seating. I think our initial proposal here shows 33 parks. Again, it's typical, but it's not always needed as much today with drive-through use. It is post-COVID, drive-through seems to be the way people go. It's, we went from a mix of about 65% drive-through, 35% dining. It's probably gone up to 85, 15 now, post-COVID. One of the, you know, it's a great site in that we're in the middle of the busy commercial district. There is some challenges to the site, and I think we've looked at this site over the past couple of years, and the vice president of the company didn't want to do it. He thought it was too far below grade, and it's just not visible, not visible enough, I shouldn't say it's not visible. So that was the challenge. He's since retired, so we took another look at it. And it was the best, was the partner to go ahead and do it, because I think the real estate is just so tight here. I mean, from the corner of the off-ramp to where you need to be, and you do need to be not much further than McDonald's, you need all those eyes on you to be successful. So, we're hopeful that it's in a good spot because it's signalized. So you go into the plaza, you're deep into the plaza, you're away from actually where all of the other plaza activity is going on. There's really not much going on at that corner, so we feel, you know, our impact is going to be minimal. And we're just, you know, we're looking for a lot of input from the board so that we can, we can present this the way you'd like to see it. I think Matt can flip it over, and this is a very, so this is the current model. They change every about five, six, seven years, they change the style of the building. This has a more southwestern look. It has, these are called hardy plank panels, and we use what's called a nichia siding. It's a, it's a stone fibrous kind of siding. And this, this corner element, which kind of is the spotlight of the building, where brings your eyes to it, that's kind of, they call that a rust panel. It's, it's not exactly a rust panel any longer. We did start out with rust panels, but rust ended up all over the concrete.
True, rust.
Yeah, we've got about six of those restaurants where you just can't do anything about it, when the rust is everywhere, it's there.
Yeah, but nichia makes a good.
They do make a real nice finish. It's more, and we spend more on it, but it's a much nicer finish. And, you know, this elevation shows there's some outdoor seating there with a, like, it's a pergola top. It might, actually, this one might have a roof.
Where, so just for orientation, which is north, which is on this? Where's that corner rust thing?
This, that would be on the front facing Trippam.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be the most visible corner of the building.
That's here? That's this one? Okay.
Yes.
Got it. That's what I wanted to.
No, no, it's a back corner.
Yeah, faces the intersection, excuse me.
Okay. So is the, I just have a question about the outdoor seating. Is that enclosed? So to get to it, you would have to go inside and then come out that way, or?
Typically, there's a sidewalk that can lead to the outdoors.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
There it is.
That really shows.
Yeah, that doesn't show up very well.
Oh.
Oh, and so that's behind, okay, yep, okay, got it.
And we've only had a few locations where we've done this. We've done it in typical, similar locations, Parenton. There's a nice building we built about four years ago that has that type of seating outside. And, you know, it's, the reason why we don't do it as much is the seasons, you don't get a very long outdoor seating use here, but, but.
When we have it.
Yeah, that's right, it is changing.
And when we have it, I will say that even when it's pretty chilly, people just want to be outside.
Outside, anything above 50.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and if the sun is out, they're game.
Yeah, and even more so post-COVID, I think.
Yeah, I think you're right. Yep.
Hey, Mike, can I ask a quick question? I don't want to take you off.
Sure.
You're gonna be taking down the Pizza Hut building?
Okay.
Yeah, I just picked up the Google map to make sure.
We'll be looking at a complete raise of that and a whole new reconfiguration coming off of the entry pieces, off of the existing aisles, to come into the site. So, and reconfiguration of the parking, proper circulation, proper queue for that drive-through area.
So. So the second building is down there in the shit, though, like you're green, is that?
Yes.
And that is, you know, we don't know.
You don't know.
We just, it's a little bit larger site than we normally typically would do. And we've had some success in the past. Sometimes we tend to, where we go, people want to be, so we end up buying a slightly larger parcel, and somebody will, you know, I don't know if it's a coffee user, or something, something that doesn't conflict with our business, like, one thing it won't be is it won't be a Chipotle. But it couldn't be anything but. I know, I shouldn't have said that probably, but.
How big was the building square footed again?
2,650 is about what we've been building, plus or minus somewhere a little smaller. Yeah.
And how big is the parcel?
It's well over, it's over an acre.
Yeah, I didn't get to that geometry.
Yeah.
So, could you point out where on your drawing is the current Pizza Hut? Is that the ghost of building?
No, no, it's sitting like right here.
Oh.
Right, it's like a rectangle right in the middle.
Okay.
So we are trying to push it forward, obviously, to get a little more visibility in Trippam.
Do you, and I don't know if you all know in downtown, but I'm sure you're probably familiar with it, just doing research, do you know, like, size-wise, how it compares to the physical building? Not the lot itself, but the physical one that's downtown?
It'd be a little smaller than that one.
Okay.
It's a little smaller. That, so that model was a tall wooden building. That's when they used to do the Spanish tile, and that's been converted. But those restaurants used to be very large in the front. They'd seat 60 through 70 people, with a small kitchen. Now, with drive-through, it's a small dining room and a kitchen.
Offer speed.
Yes.
To get that, get that service through the window quick, which Mike has taught me through the projects we've worked with together, that Taco Bell has the fastest drive-through in the industry.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Four years straight, they, I think they were rated number one as far as speed, even faster Chick, well, Chick-fil-A has more customers, but yes, very, pretty fast.
Mystery.
So, the other part that we wanted to talk and introduce to the planning board is, because of that grade change and grade elevation, and this is probably a little premature, is the necessary potential signage. And understanding the strict code here in the village with regards to sign requirements and sign pieces, but at the same time, I think everyone wants to have, be a successful business, otherwise, we don't want to have vacancies or something that, that comes in and has to leave because they just can't get the customer draw. So that's always an important balance that we have to take a look at. And understanding that potentially this would require a visit to the ZBA. But my understanding is it starts here with the planning board far as a signed regulation permit. Make application, and you guys would make a recommendation before we kick to the ZBA. So, I think really, we wanted to kind of get a temperature test, I'll call it, from the board of, with regards and understanding that location. And, again, goes back to that that marquee corner and the ability to get signage going facing both Trippam and really, sitting in the corner, it gets that visual impact. We're not looking at anything out of the ordinary or out of character, but same time, maybe it will require more than code currently allows. Just wanted to get a temperature test of you guys to say, if this is a no-go, no-deal, Mike's got to go back to his people and really contemplate whether or not this is an investment that they want to make, because it's critical for them.
So how big are those bells and the texts, just like it?
Probably got it in by.
Our code always says the outside thing, and I'm just trying to get a sense of that.
In that package that was submitted, there are the dimensional pieces.
Oh, there are, okay.
Including the way signage, it has a bunch of stuff in this package.
Okay.
Bear with me, but I did not write that down when I came.
I have time to look. Yeah, don't bother them. We'll just, we'll look that over.
And certainly, when we come to application, we'll have all of that fully detailed. There's the bell. The bell itself.
The colors are so much better than they used to be.
Oh, yeah.
And it's a difference, you know, I mean, that's.
Feeling.
They exchanged all that orange for purple, so that's just a band of purple.
You know, I think you'll be really surprised. There's such a lack of eateries in the village.
We were talking about.
On any given day, you know, McDonald's doesn't have a sign, and I'm going to tell you, I'm sure you've noticed. I mean, the cars are wrapped around that building.
I was gonna say.
Have you, have you taken account of what happens at McDonald's? Going to need to advertise. I mean, you will be busy.
I mean, you're aware that we have in our mall, maybe, a restaurant that, no sign anywhere, so if you have.
And it's packed there all the time.
It will come.
We were talking before everybody showed up, and I was like, yeah, about, about, about.
Ciccolo.
Ciccolo, about McDonald's, yeah, and it just, and it would, you know.
Definitely something that would.
It's like.
And with.
Potential, yeah, there will be people.
Just to get a reference, that bell element is about 2'6" by 2'8".
Oh, oh, sounds like that. Yeah, okay.
Just to get a scale of what we're talking about here.
You're gonna be allowed 25 square feet.
You're allowed 25 square feet, I might read it.
Yeah, that's the combination of all the signs, but if you're going to want something, a monument sign or something that's a little different because of the situation of where it's at, then, you know, you may need, obviously, like Matt said, you may need a variance. Keep in mind also, there are billboards up at 13.
There is a, that's the only billboard in town.
Utilize if you need to.
The way, there is, there's the big billboard, which, as I understood, was always just, it's, you know. But there is the wayfinding that has McDonald's and, you know, which I think is when you're exiting is what you want to see, which way to go.
In case people want to see that, there it is. So this, right, this is the, I know, I figured that would just be easy for people. So, you know, as you're coming down 13, right, there's the directional signage there. As you start to veer off 13, there's the one billboard that is mentioning.
But there's one, does it have the one that has the McDonald's and everything?
So that's, that's as you take the exit, right, as you move up the exit, and I think if you turn around and look, and I just saw that one there, I think that sign right there, I think, I guess is Monroe. So there's a Monroe. I didn't even realize that was. There you go.
She's, it's like when you.
No, there's a smart.
When you're road tripping, it's like McDonald's.
Yeah, so as you, that one is.
We're required about that already, because that's one of the first things we try to find out. They're telling us that it's, we can't get on the sign.
It's, yes.
It's the state DOT. We have a girl in our office that deals with them, because we have them in a lot of our locations, but this particular location, they said that they're not allowing them any longer.
Really? So, right, so as you, as you come off, here it is, right, as you're already off the entrap, there's the Econo Lodge Monument.
Sign on the right.
There is, so there's Applemeas, McDonald's, Mobile Gas Station, and Econo Lodge.
What? That doesn't, well, they didn't take, this makes no sense.
Yeah, for a little point of reference, those are very important signs.
I know.
We pulled those up and seen 10 to 15 percent increase in business. It's that important.
I bet, well, especially something like this. You come up here, do I go left or right? Now, you can see it to the right, looking down, maybe, but it's, oh, really interesting, okay.
But that, because when you're traveling, that's what I, you know, I'm going to get gas, and I'm wanting to know, do I go left, do I go right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Just like anything, it's a new world in DOT, and they're being very strict on those, those directional signs.
But it's already there.
Oh, so they're not.
I have, I have some.
Brett has a comment on that. Go ahead.
I'm, I'm very familiar with those signs, and when they were put in, we were told by DOT that they were going to allow so many square foot of signage, and that was it. If, if there was more people that wanted to get on it, too bad. So they're not going to add anything more. That, that's always been the case.
Okay.
So what's on that right now? Who's on that signage right now?
That's it, right there. Econo Lodge, Mobile, McDonald's.
I mean, I would think Econo Lodge could come off of there, because. You, you could probably make a deal with Econo Lodge. Well, no, but they contract, they're contracting now to social services, so everybody that's living in Econo Lodge is a homeless person.
They may not be that way forever.
I don't know if you realize that. You might want to take that into consideration with your outdoor seating. You might not want it.
Yeah.
It won't be that way.
I know, there's many mics here now, yeah.
And just so you two know, the gentleman that just spoke was Brett Cross, he's a village stormwater engineer, so you get to know.
Okay.
Yes.
And make sure you knew who he was.
I do, yeah.
Well. So that is the reason.
As you move up.
Moving up a little bit more, yeah, thank you. I want to get to where we can see the Pizza Hut building.
So as you move up, there's a directional sign when the lane split.
Now I see what's there.
There's more signage here for.
Homewood Suites and.
Yeah, oh, Homewood Suites is to the left, Kewee Blue is to the right, and the Heights Restaurant is to the left.
Oh, the Kewee Blue's on there? Okay, so wait, hold, hold right there, because then we can, we can really see the site right there.
No, I was gonna say, actually, it's more visible than you think, because it's not a lot of deciduous trees.
Yeah.
And then the others.
Somebody's trimmed the pines in the.
Yeah, they, yeah, they look like umbrellas, yeah.
And apparently, you can go left or right.
Clearcut all those trees.
I got a few.
I was gonna say. I was gonna say, budget that right here.
We'll have a very good landscape architect here engaged.
That's a really good idea.
That was my type of way.
Speaking to that, one of the things to consider when you're, when you're looking at your siding, you've got some existing trees here, you've got some existing trees here. You know, think of, when you pull up your landscape architect, and we strongly recommend that you get that kind of thinking on this, think about where you might place your building. It might slide over to accommodate some of those trees, because every time you take down a tree, we have to figure out how much you're going to pay for that tree. And existing trees cost more than new, or are worth more than new trees. Yeah, exactly.
Water, and it's, you know, that would be important to that site.
And you have a stormwater issue. You're concerned about the water here, so.
Sure.
So that's something to really consider. There's, you know, this is, this is a fairly typical way that you lay out one of your, one of your sites. There are so many, like, really interesting alternative layouts to this site that might preserve that tree and save you a lot of money in the long run, and then also make it so that, you know, like, I don't know.
I don't see which tree you're talking about.
Oh, here, there's.
But I mean, we're getting up ahead of ourselves, I think.
Tree here, there's a cluster here, and there's a cluster here.
Oh, you looked at them.
I looked at the Google map.
Yeah, so she's looking at this tree right here, at the, at the one end of the building. There's a cluster of trees at the other side of the building.
And then another cluster over here.
And then over here, there's some.
Oh, no, a tree where it says museums. There's another cluster there. So, I would just suggest have your landscape architect look at this and see how much it's possible to preserve those clusters of trees. And think about an alternate configuration so that you don't have to worry about taking those down.
We went through, we'll take a look at that. We went through a number of different layouts to try to flow queuing. We don't want to get our queue into the plaza, you know.
Sure.
As much as we can avoid it. And part of it is, to be honest with you, is getting our building in the right place, because if it's buried in the back of the site, we're dead in the water.
Could I ask, so you said that you're, it's 40 seats. Thirty, there's 33 parking slots, I didn't count them. What is, what is he required to have for this? Yeah.
I mean, I'll look it up for you.
The outdoor seating might be 12 to 16, so that might add, it might add some to that.
Okay, but if, if most of your stuff is drive-through, you know, I'm wondering if there's some room there, too, to be.
There may be, yeah.
Yeah, the less impervious, we're always pleased to have less impervious.
We, we would love to waive some of the parking requirement if it means that there's less.
No, it's true.
Impervious space.
Sorry, I kept you.
I, I will let you finish or move on to the next steps. Brent did write a letter, though, too, and since Brent's here, we'll let him go over that at some point, too, but by all means. Continue on.
I mean, I think from a standpoint of what we have to show tonight, I guess all I could add is that we employ about 30 to 35 employees, and we do a lot with student employment, too. So, it, that could be, you know, a nice thing for some people that are looking for some extra money. It's a site that's been pretty much, pretty dark for a while.
We'd love to have.
Our company owns, matter of fact, our company started out as a pizza franchisee.
Oh, well, there's a good history.
We had 17 of them, and we closed all 17 during COVID, and that was it. We sold them back, sold them out. And it was a good brand for many, many years. I miss it.
How many other Taco Bells are there that you, that are in your, your portfolio?
We have, I hesitated, 107 Taco Bells.
Did any of those close during COVID?
Uh, no.
I would suspect not.
No, it was interesting. We were very scared. In the first week, we were terrified because we were down 40%. Then as COVID kept going, we started, we did better.
Well, that's good. That's, I mean, I would have suspected that maybe a couple, but I mean, I think that, you know, kind of leads to the. COVID was a big deal, and if none of them closed, I mean, that's, there's some stability.
That's pretty good, yeah.
Yeah, versus Pizza Huts, right, I mean.
Yeah, and I think College Towns are probably a good place for these.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah, and you know, I know there's the walkability factor in a lot of areas. This doesn't strike me as a real walkable site. We have some of them. We have some, although we're adding sidewalks and.
I, I will say this, because I take the bus almost daily from downtown up here, and I stop there, and the number of people who get off at that corner, well, it's, it's the next corner probably where the Key Bank is, right past the gas station, the number of people who get off of that bus stop is astounding, absolutely astounding. So you will have some walkability, because what I see is lots of people get off at that spot, because there's a lot of, of apartment buildings nearby that, so people will get off at that spot and will walk over to Aldi's or walk over to Planet Fitness.
So you can actually cut through, so if you take a look at this big plaza here, all the, all the way at the end is Big Lots,
there's a path right through here to some of the communities up here where there's houses, or there's these apartments here that, that you can cut through this way.
So, so I would, I would say, even though it doesn't look like a walk, it's not a traditionally walkable neighborhood, because of the density that we have over there, and because the draw of the Aldi's and the Planet Fitness, you do get an enormous number of people walking through. So I would, I would think about walkability, if I were you. I would think about.
Well, that, I think, but how could it not be, oh, you mean, it's all, yeah, that's really.
Yeah, like, you don't have a, you don't have any sort of sidewalk that welcomes people to walk to you. And I know walking through this parking lot is difficult, but if you've had a thing that.
Yeah, we could definitely connect it. There is room to make that.
Yes.
Yeah, we haven't got into some of those detailing yet. It was, like I said, this is really the.
And the other thing, too, and I'm sure you're well aware of this, if you've got 100 and something spots, there, there are, there's a push to configure where you're not in an island of asphalt, you know, so there's a push to configure these things so that, you know, instead of having, you know, I don't know, maybe this is a driveway that's just a one-way out, you could actually build, you could actually continue this and connect that green space, so that people who come in here have to go out that way to the parking lot, people who come in through your drive-through, they can come out here, but then this is now connected green-wise, and maybe even sidewalk-wise to what you might have as a new pad site. So the, the, the more you can minimize your asphalt, the happier we will be. The more you can make it walkable, the happier we will be, and quite frankly, you're going to have a ton of people coming here. I don't think you're going to have any sort of issue with people not finding you, because it is a very, very popular spot to get off your bus and walk, or to come into Aldi's. People will know you're there. The other thing, too, is it might be where, you know, that drive-by that you did with Google Maps, it might just be that, like, maybe your bell tower needs to be over at this corner, and it's some other spot to be really super visible from both Trip Hammer and 13. I, like, looking at it, I don't think of that tower as being that's very problematic for, for us at all, but if there's a spot on your site that makes it even more visible from either of these two places, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, we'll take a look, we'll take a look at.
Yeah, I was wondering about the placement of that. That was one of the reasons I asked is to, for visibility, like, from Route 13. So, but I, we haven't seen the full signage yet, so we need to take, it's a little premature yet, but.
Yeah, the side of the building has an element over the main entry door that's, that faces.
Right, I, I remember seeing, Mike shared some pictures with us.
Picture that on the next.
You have, there was that other one that you've had, right?
I don't know if it's at that one or not.
There's definitely one of the main, main entrance, I think, opposite, yeah, there's that area there, but that's.
Oh, I see, that one, yeah.
It doesn't have the word.
It doesn't say Taco Bell, it's got the Bell, yeah.
Most people, it's a pretty iconic bell.
Yeah, I think so.
So.
Okay, go ahead, Brett.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I, I wouldn't even be upset if you don't want to put your, your, your rust tower in two corners, because you really do have two fronts. You have the front that's facing the road, and you have a front that faces the plaza.
Yeah, for lack of a better term, it's a corner lot, and I mean, there's, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, especially if you do things like connect, you know, more walkability, and maybe make it so that someone can get from here to here, your two different spaces, without having to go across the parking lot.
Brett, did you want to go through, go through your comments?
Yes, I would. So I read what Mike had, had submitted to Mike, and there was a quick comment about traffic, and I, I don't predict that there's a problem, but I think that it would be wise and prudent to at least get some kind of engineering background on that. My, my take on it is that, as we've kind of discussed here tonight, Taco Bell is a much more efficient moving, they're moving their customers in and out than Pizza Hut ever was, or intended to be, so there is going to be more traffic coming in and out of here than ever was the case when Pizza Hut was there, so, you know, is that a big deal? It may not be, but I think that we should, somebody should put some numbers on that, and take a look at what the potential impact on the intersection is out at the, out at North Trip Hammer Road.
And that's, and that's something that we've typically done for a lot of projects, well, not a lot, but projects that would, you know, entail something like this, we've required that of pretty much most recent projects.
I would, I would say, yeah, because that, that intersection is, is kind of tricky if you're a walker, because when you're coming out of the parking, or by past Joanne's and the old friendlies, and you want to turn right, I, which is what I'm usually doing, is I, I'm focusing on what, who's coming at me, and sometimes there's a person walking, and I just feel very strongly, it, it would be so much better, like in Massachusetts, they used to have these walk things for a four-way intersection, all people stopped for the walkers. Nobody went anywhere, and they could walk across, and it was just safe. I'm very concerned about this particular, I've been concerned before, and the more successful the mall is, yeah, I think it's really would be prudent to have some sort of traffic study thing, some sort of, yeah, we've got to look at that.
Okay, go on, Brett.
Yeah, a couple more topics. I think we've mentioned drainage on a, a number of occasions during tonight's conversation, and I, I want to emphasize that, you know, that's something that's going to be quite important to us. One, aside from the fact that we have some regulations that would require us to review that, if, if we think about where that water from this site goes, it's not, it's not, it's not self-evident to the public where the, where this water goes, but it goes under the embankment for, under North Trip Hammer Road, over onto the top slash Applebee's side, and goes down through the mall property, and we're all pretty familiar with the vulnerability, or, you know, the, the issues we've had down at the mall, so this is a is contributory to that flow, so it's going to be, you know, not, not only do we already have regulations that we're going to need to meet, that, you know, that's a pretty critical part of our village infrastructure. And it's interesting, as I think I read, or you, maybe you told us tonight, it's a separate tax parcel, you're not part of the mall, the, the Cugable, Cugable Mall property, and so it, there's a corner down there, right near where your driveway is proposed, right at the very corner of the mall pavement now. It's a confluence of both a sewer main and where all the drainage comes, and in fact, it's pretty common for the, the, the size of the pipe that goes under North Trip Hammer Road, it's, was designed, you know, many, many years ago, and isn't necessarily accommodating to the current runoff, and we get a ponding in that corner, and, oh, by the way, there just happens to be a sewer manhole right there that goes underwater every time that happens. There was a story from about five, 10 years ago, that one day I was out there, and for whatever the reason may be, I noticed that the manhole cover had been knocked off by a snowplow, and every time it rained, that thing was just taking full flow right into the sewer, which is certainly not what we want. John Courtney was quick to get that remedied, so. As a side note, I, I don't predict that there will be any difficulty, but kind of like you to give some focus, or next time have some, at least some kind of thoughts on your sewer connection, you know, is there, is what's there useful to you, or do you have to change that? Same way with your water supply, so. Maybe the last topic is, I'm, I'm a little bit, maybe curious or confused or concerned about the concept of there being another business in that future grass area there. It kind of is hard for me to picture how, if you needed, I, I think, as we've said, you probably don't necessarily need all of that parking, but if you, if all of that parking is there for your business, where would anybody else park for another business? So it seems like that's not, as you've admitted, that's not really thought out, and so I'm not sure, I'm not sure how, moving forward, if it's necessary for us to be including any conversation about that, or if it's inappropriate to even have that as part of the discussion, because if we, it seems like if we're going to talk about it, then we need to talk about it, but if we're not going to talk about it, then let's not talk about it. So I think that's kind of the, the big points. The drainage, I, I guess I made, may have skipped over a little bit on the drainage, that there are redevelopment standards from the DEC that allow you to have a little bit of relief or credit from previous developments. But a couple of things, wanna, you know, I've always maintained, and this has been a topic with other developers, is that if you're gonna pretty much destroy the site, you know, you're gonna demo the site completely, it seems like it's hard to argue that you haven't, haven't created the opportunity to take care of the drainage to the maximum level possible, and that our local law, local stormwater regulations would come in, 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 even if there were D, New York State DEC redevelopment standards, that we would still be looking for some level of stormwater management to satisfy our local law anyways. Excuse me. So I, I'm sure we can work together and, and figure that out, but I, I think it's, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned when I look at where the natural topography goes, it's to the northwest corner of your site, and that's where most of your asphalt is, so I'm kind of not sure how that's going to work, but this is something that we can look forward to seeing what you come up with. That's it.
Thanks, Brett.
Thanks, Brett. And I'll just add to that, Brett, that once we get a full topographic and utility survey, we'll better address all these things. Our firm is, I think, one of the best in upstate New York with regards to the drainage and the drainage requirements, water quality, runoff reduction, and mitigation for those pieces, and certainly we'll get into your local law, and look forward to working with you to making sure we improve the situation, but certainly, you know, as any development, we're not going to solve the drainage issues of the entire plaza in that impervious area on this one acre site, but we'll do the best engineering practice on our site and make sure we're not causing issues and trying to do the best we can to solve.
Yep, that sounds, sounds right, yep.
I was just gonna, and Matt, were you saying, is a possibility of you raising the site as far as elevation-wise?
No, I'm using the raise word as demo.
R-A-Z.
R-A-Z, yes.
It's old English.
It's a lot, a lot of stuff.
Lisa, to answer your question, it would be 26 spaces are required, but as, as the planning board knows, you can reduce that by 25%.
Okay, so those, those additional then are because of, you're, you're looking at prospective things, but
Potentially.
But it may be that when you start looking at the drainage and all that other stuff, it may not, yeah, so we won't, have to get ahead of ourselves here.
We're likely to go less than that. We typically, it depends on, we have New Hartford, we have minimum, we have maximums, some townships have minimums, so it depends on where we are. We start out with more, and then we scuff back a little.
Yeah, yeah, so if we go from 26 and we can prove up to 75%, that means you can have 19 and a half spots that we, would be in our, our.
Is a minimum.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. And as you iterated, we agree
getting, reducing impervious areas and environmental enhancement.
Absolutely.
Other comments from folks on the planning board? Again, this is all informal, so, you know, a lot of the stuff that we get into and asked about, we would cover, you know, in detail when there was a, you know, a formal presentation, but.
I have a question for you, Mike. The, the 31-foot width of the parking, the driveline here, what's our, what's our minimum?
24.
24, okay.
So again, there's room to be cutting down the impervious if necessary.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Is, in the packet that you have, are there other materials? Do you have some sort of thought about this sign here?
We, we don't have it now. I, I would say that our hope would be that we could get something that you could see at the grade, you know, that's having a sign.
That's what I'm worried about.
Not a highway sign, we're not, but, but, you know, similar to, like, Monroe has at least a recognizable sign, because they're very, even worse. I mean, they're completely in the back corner, but that's a big, it is a big thing for us to be able to be seen. We don't need an enormous sign, but just some, somebody.
Okay, I was just bringing, I just will say that when I travel and you go to some of these, like, on the interstate, and, you know, from miles away, there's this 50-foot thing. I'm just thinking.
No. No, no, no.
Okay, well, we'll see what you come up with.
Also, it's, it's not in here, and, but when you do kind of reconfigure and think about your parking, just remember that we'll want to see, you know, if you want 19 spaces, leave some spaces for tree areas, so that.
Break it up with.
It won't be, it won't be.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Mike, Mike can point you to the tree law section, and they, that talks about road trees and parking lots.
There is a parking lot.
There's a parking lot section.
I think it's one every 12 spaces or something, you're supposed to have a tree, one every eight.
10, all right.
Eight, one every eight, whatever.
Yeah, I just want to know, so does the property go all the way over to the Econo Lodge tree, the trees? Because there is a grass.
Which way are you going, east?
Um, yeah, to the Econo Lodge, yes. That, it goes all the way over, that.
They'll be pretty much.
So that green space grass is part of the Pizza Hut property?
Looks like it's divided, and I mean, you can see it on here, but if you pulled up your.
Yeah, I think it's divided.
I, I think it's divided. It, it, if you look at the mowing line, those trees are on the Econo Lodge side.
Oh, so the trees belong to Econo Lodge?
I'm not quite sure, but it looks like that for them.
Because it's got a nice green space there, and then the trees run here.
Yeah.
But asking about the water, I wanted to, whenever I have noticed, like, gone to Monroe or something, the water seems to be coming from the east, in, coming downstream to their site, too, so what about the?
Their, their site is.
The lowest.
Is the lowest.
Right, so what, the whole problem has been ongoing, and it's just, what, what is the obligation of those upstream? To, I mean, they're supposed to take care of the water on their sites, and it's not happening, it's not.
But hasn't there been some construction going on in the Econo Lodge parking lot forever?
The issue, the issue that I have noticed with, and Brett, please step in if I'm wrong, but the issue I have noticed with the Cugable Mall area is your your surface, your surface drains are never kept clean, and a lot of it has to do with that building's been vacant, so nobody takes a look at, nobody cleans that area, all, all the water runs to it. Whereas you're going to be there, you'll have some maintenance crew or whatnot, they're going to keep this drainage, you know, keep the surface here being clogged up. That's when we start having issues, when we get clogged.
Besides, if there's water in the Taco Bell parking lot up here, it'd be just like the Taco Bell parking lot downtown.
I don't know, really.
Oh, yeah.
Plant willow.
I just, I just always know, like, the skateboard park is always underwater, I don't.
Yeah, so Lorraine, to your question, it does look like, it does look like those trees there are probably on. It's pretty close, so, yeah, it maybe looks like they're on the Econo Lodge side, or maybe they split it, but it's pretty close. It goes, it goes all the way over here, pretty much, when you zoom out, per se, at least. So there's a little bit of green space between this property and where those parking lots start, so maybe over here.
So we don't want them to die.
That doesn't look like an area they're necessarily going to disturb it.
No, I assume.
Like, at least that's, that slim buffer there.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well.
All right, good.
Um, Lorraine.
No, when we were talking about the water, so in the Econo Lodge parking lot, they've been digging in there forever. Is that part of whatever they're trying to fix? They've been digging in there forever, is that part of whatever they're trying to fix?
Yeah, the, the ground pipe there collapsed.
Yeah, cause that's been going on for a long time.
Yeah, well, good.
Any final thoughts from you, Jim? Any questions?
No, but I'm sure we'll hear more.
So then, yeah, for you next steps.
It's up to this Mike.
Okay.
There you go.
Great, looking forward to the next one.
Appreciate it, thanks for.
Yeah, our, our timing will be, we've gotta get complete survey, like I said, and then I can get full set of site plans and. Work out those details, not only with you, Mike, but with Brett as well, and it sounds like that'd be a good resource for us to kind of make sure.
Yeah, just send me an email if you got questions or whatnot, I think I'll forward them all to Brett, and then we'll either get on a group first.
Perfect. All right. Sounds good.
Next item on the agenda is stress report, so that was me, just wanna take one note. Let me stop sharing here. So. General stuff, public commentary, there wasn't much approval of minutes. They did some budget transfers, if you were in this meeting last time, you'll remember, there was a giant fireproof cabinet right there. You'll notice that it's gone now, so that was one of the things they did, the budget transfer for, they also talked about, and I. I don't know, Mike, maybe you can elaborate on this, but they did a budget transfer to use some of the leftover money, it was the oak crest paving for garage area paving.
Yeah, they didn't use as much as they had earmarked, they put the surface on that last year, the year before, so they used it for the parking lot here in the village. Our parking lot.
Yes. Also, there was, one of the items on the agenda was the request for waiver of thirty day municipality notification by Northeast Pizza and Bones on Cinema Drive. So if you remember, there used to be Northeast Pizza, and there used to be Scale House Brewing there, when Northeast bought it. They shut down, they, they own both pieces there, they kind of shut down the bar area, they just ran out of the pizza place, and they're gonna be opening up, it sounds like the bar section.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so there's discussion about that. The next item on the agenda was the big thing, it was the discussion about the solar law update. So Lisa and I had gone to the meeting in end of January, I think. Where they discussed it initially, so they hadn't discussed it in a, in a Monday night board meeting since.
Since they got that.
Since they had the initial discussion, so they had had some, had some homework items, people enough, we read it, and had some discussions, so. What their plan is, and I'll get into some of the things that they talked about, but what the plan is, is. And Mike was there, and Natalie was there too, so if I missed anything, let me know, but they, they're going to mark up and send their comments about the various things they discussed to us. For us to have a chance to review, and then we'll have a joint meeting so that we can talk about all these things together. So there were a couple of things, one of them was. Some of it's more administrative, you know, is, you know, should this definition be in or out, should, should we keep the definitions in the definition section? If we only reference it once in the document, can we just put it where it is, or if we reference it multiple times, that's more administrative stuff. There were questions about the decommissioning plan, and should it be there for all the tiers? I think we shared that before, should it be there for tier one, two, and three, or just for tier two, or just for tier three, or is there a way that maybe we can break it out, commercial versus residential? They, there was a question about the square footage size, and so. I think Drew was the one that looked at that. Carolyn looked at the definition piece of it, and the decommissioning piece of it, Drew had looked at some of the square footage thing, so, and it was, you know, a question about, what's the right number? And we had the same question. We were all on board with the, the number that the state gave us, twenty four hundred, we were, they were like, yeah, no, that's wrong too. I think the way that we approached it was. We took a look at some of the other ones here and said, hey, that seems like a decent sizer, I don't, I don't think we said any of them was, oh my gosh, that's too big. I think the way that Drew had looked at it was, you know, how big would it have to be to power a average, you know, the average electrical consumption for a house here, so. He'll provide that number though, and provide some background for it too. Decommissioning, square footage, definitions, I thought there was another piece in. Oh, I think, I think the decommissioning piece kind of played together, there was some discussion about. You know, being able to. Waive certain things and, you know, whether the planning board did that.
Have discretion or not.
Yeah, had the discretion to do that or not. I had my opinions on all these, I think other people have opinions on them all too, but that's why we're gonna get those ahead of them, there was a suggestion that maybe we meet. At their next meeting, and Carolyn said, well, let's let them, let's get them the information first, so we have a chance to look at it. And then we'll have a meeting to chat about all that stuff.
Hope that, so I hope the joint meeting won't be before he and I are both.
We talked about end of April, I thought they said, didn't they?
End of April, good.
Yeah, cause they wanted to see the budget.
Yeah, cause wrong, and so, right, so, so the next item on the agenda was to start the preliminary budget discussions. I will say after that, they adjourned into executive session.
And I did not come back, I clicked the, I didn't know, you know.
But after that was adjourned anyway, so. Yeah, that was a, that's.
Yeah, so the next step would be that there's a red line that. That had been made predominantly of Carolyn's suggestions, and then I added in comments from the board of where they thought changes or had additional. Comments and thoughts to, I circulated that to the board of trustees late last week, and then I was out of the office for the remainder of the week, so I'll follow up with them tomorrow to see if that's ready to be circulated to the board and make sure that my comments encompass. Their comments appropriately and correctly. But basically Mike's points were all on board, there is some discussion about. Yeah, I do think their concern is more so powering of a fully electrified home versus how many panels can be on one roof in the size that of those. So that was where Drew kind of looked at it, and Wolfgang was coming from as well.
This would be, this would be ground mounted.
On the ground.
And so, we approached it differently.
We always said it was ground for the ground.
Yeah, for the, yeah, for, yeah, the square footage is specifically.
So, yeah, the, the goal was to power the home, and how can we help people get off the grid more rather than aesthetic considerations of the size of the. Ground mounted structure.
Well, we can talk about that, but I think when we also were talking about the size, we said technology's probably gonna make. The panels more efficient, so how big do we wanna go, when in fact, probably the size we have now might be doubled.
Also, some discussion about the interplay of the tree law with solar panels.
I think, right, Carolyn brought up a question about.
And Drew was concerned about adding trees or requiring buffering of trees may then reduce the capabilities of the solar panels and.
No.
In an offset of carbon footprint with solar panels as opposed to adding trees. And adding some sort of consideration that should be taken into if we're waiving tree law requirements and such.
Okay.
I'll look at it.
Yep.
I think the one thing, though, that came out of this process, and this is, right, it's not very often that we. Pass along something this robust, you know, the tree law was robust, but that was also spearheaded by Simon was, when he was trustee. So this, I think, is probably, at least since I've been on the board, this is probably the most robust thing that the board has developed to recommend to the trustees.
We did sidewalk and lighting.
I feel like this is more robust, like just law. Yeah, more robust, not the first thing, but the most robust thing, and I think, you know, good, good lesson learned is. For something, because there'll be more, you know, if we, when we come up with a short term rental thing, it'll be a very similar situation, it'll start with us. We'll take a look at what model laws are available, and probably pass something along with them. When we do that, though, and we didn't do that, and, you know, I take responsibility for that, it was just kind of a, you know, forethought is. Go and, you know, present whether, I don't think it passed, maybe it's a joint meeting, I don't know, but present it to them, and like, you know, at least walk them through, you know, forget about necessarily the content in it. Cause that's for them to take a look at and review, but, you know, our thought process as we came up with it, so.
Yeah, I think this is a healthy process, cause as you recall, with the tree law. At least the first meeting it was presented at, it wasn't received.
Very well.
Well.
Right.
And then it was worked on, and then it was passed.
Well, there was some.
It went back and forth a couple of times.
Yeah, we had a bunch of stuff that we.
Between you and the board of trustees?
Well, maybe it was just at the trustees that they did it, they had some discussion though, maybe it was during a working session, but.
Maybe, but.
Or maybe there was an informal presentation before that, but there was definitely, there was definitely between the first time that they saw it and when it was adopted, I know that there was at least a meeting where some changes were made. Or maybe it was not outside the meeting, but, but it wasn't like.
It wasn't this collaborative.
Oh, no, 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 I think it was mostly at the trustee level.
Maybe it would have been beneficial.
Yeah.
Well, I agree, I think it was a kind of a. Well, this up.
Yes.
Yeah, a little awkward, because we had.
Simon.
Yes, Simon being a trustee, plus we also had, his wife was our planning board member.
Oh, yes.
So it was a little different, I will say. Then, and, and it made it, and that's another lesson learned, perhaps, but, which is why I think we're having some issues. But, but it's.
But moving forward, I think, you know.
A presentation is very important, or else a very explicit memo, if you can't do that.
And there's gonna be things that we pass up, it's not, I'm not saying everything, there's gonna be things that we pass up, that you don't, we don't have to have some joint meeting and presentation for, you know, if there's. Some minor change to something, or, you know, something that Mike and Natalie worked on, that, right, a memo will be just fine, like what I sent along with this, but. And I wanna retouch on this again during other business, but before we get on that and other business. The next item is other business, discussion of code corrections and revision of the tree law, so Lisa and I did meet in between the last meeting and this one. Because we didn't do it the other time, because we were all on vacation, various other places, so. We chatted about solar first, but we did also chat about, you know, the Balkan was talking about the tree law and what's in there now. And I think, and so, Yamila had provided a bunch of edits, so there are some in there that I think, and we can go over them, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, I'm gonna make comments, and I'll send it back out to everybody before the next meeting. But there's some comments in there about cleaning stuff up, making stuff more. Just readable and not as confusing, and then there are some things that I think require a bigger whole board discussion, you know, such as, is this right the way it is for residential and commercial? Or is it right for residential and we need to build out more for commercial? Or is it right for commercial and we need to build out more for residential, so I think that's the, that's the big thing that's in there, and then. For board discussion, also reevaluating, and I think Northeast Peds is a good example of this, reevaluating is thirty two units per acre the right number? I'm not sure, I know that the other lots that it came up on, the one, you know, next to you, they had, you know, well over thirty.
Yeah, I honestly, I think it's gonna be different for commercial versus residential.
And so maybe, and maybe that's how we carve it out, right, I think maybe, you know, maybe the law itself is great, but the units need to be broken out differently, so I think that's what we need to take a look at.
Can't be putting thirty trees out.
But, but we, we went through the law, you know, the law that's out there line by line, and what was there seems, it, it's not like, oh gosh, well, you know, why did we do that, I think. Fundamentally, it's right, but there are some tweaks that need to be made to it.
Well, and we had to go through this. But now we've had two non-commercial and one commercial, and I think it's becoming clear, but it was funny, I hadn't really read your comments. Cause I missed the meeting, and I just didn't do it before I left, and I had come up with the same thought too. I had spoken to Mike shortly before I left, and he was saying, well, he went over to pediatrics, and they have shrubs, and I said, you know? He says, do we count the shrubs, and I'm thinking, I don't know about shrubs, I'm having trouble whether shrubs. Really should count, people are gonna put in shrubs, they're gonna, that's landscaping, it's kind of a different goal in my brain. Than what we're trying to achieve with trees, which is what you, what did you call it, eco-service or whatever? And the shade and the ambient heat reduction and all that stuff, so that was one of the things I'm sort of stuck on.
But then Yamila brought up a good point too, there are some really beautiful, I have one in my house, really nice, like, what'd you call it, multi-stem tree?
Yeah.
And sure, all the stems are not, they're all small, but when you look at that thing together as a, as a tree or a plant or an organism, whatever, it's beautiful, and it does provide the things that we ask for. It can provide great habitat, it can provide great shape, they're aesthetically beautiful, mine, I wish it's, you know, it's green, and that's great during the, you know, during the summer, in the fall it turns red, I wish it was red longer, cause it's really pretty.
Well, the only thing I really said to Mike was that I just don't want a lot of buckthorns and honeysuckle counting. For the ones that are there.
And we, we have it invasive.
Yes, so we need to also, we discussed too, putting in the appendix. The list of trees or where to find them, or, cause people don't know, she knew where to go, but. It's, even then, there's gonna be tension between what people want and what, you know, we, we're not gonna get everything.
Right, and putting it in the appendix so we can change it, things change, you know, there's a lot of stuff around here that, there's a lot of, because it wasn't invasive, well, now it is, or now it's, you know. You know, endangered because of some, you know, bug, and then also, you know, there's different sections in there, there's a section in there about, you know, well, there's the generic hay tree section. Then there's a part in there about parking lot trees, maybe there's something we do or don't want in parking lots.
Right.
Trees along the road, maybe there's something we do or don't want along the road, maybe, maybe we're fine with boxwoods or shrubs interior, but we don't want shrubs across the road, and we don't want shrubs in a parking lot. I don't know, but, so we can put all that in there in an appendix that we can edit more live than trying to go back and revise local law.
And can you put, in the appendix, could you put recommendations? For the types that should be under the different categories, and can you?
I wonder if the vision approach, which ones you shouldn't.
Yeah, it'd be easier to say, don't do this.
And also, is it possible to put definitions, if you do add a list in of preferred trees or shrubbery or whatever, can we put in, can we put in definitions of what it is? Like, like the things like I wouldn't have known, like, like the deer eating.
Oh, right.
But that's just some.
But not that, but maybe.
I think that's good.
What type of a tree and.
There is, like, there are lists for that too.
Yeah, so we can classify them.
Salt tolerant, deer resistant.
That kind of thing.
That's all available, in fact, I came across the one, I sent them to you earlier today, I found it was a P D F, and it was recommended trees, and I've sent this around to. For everybody for the past ten years.
There's one on the city of, I think, a website too, that's recommended trees, and it has a thing where you can, there's a little check, like, good for salt, good for this, good for roadside.
It exists, it all exists, so we just have to refer people to those places, like, when you say dark sky, and then they go to a, a link, you know, just give them the link so that they can go to it.
Well, and there's some good information in, that we can put in there too, it's, it's referenced in the local law, right, whether things are understory or overstory. Great, if we're gonna have this list of trees, let's tag which ones are which, and then also, there's some discussion in there about. And we knew about this, right, when somebody comes in and says, here's what it'll look like, we wanted them to develop it, you know, when it looks mature, and that's great. Well, Yamila pointed out, you know, depending on tree, and, you know, just the climate here and the soils that we have here, though some tree might, you know, get fifty feet tall in the best living conditions, you know, at its mature height and have this huge canopy. That's not gonna happen here, so maybe we should focus on like, you know, a, what's, we wanna see what the, what it's gonna look like in ten years or fifteen years, or at fifty percent of its mature height, or something like that, that's more reasonable for the, for where we are.
Yeah.
So.
Especially, and I think we may have to, you know, if it's something in someone's yard, yeah, it might get that big, but if it's in a parking lot, it'll never get that big.
Surrounded by pavement, yeah, it's probably not gonna happen, but, so was that sort of, those were the sort of comments that I think we have, they've all been brought up at various points. And Yamila marked up the, the tree law, and then.
I think the real thing is, is the commercial versus residential is more of an issue of than, we already said that, we thought, okay, very simple, but when you start going back through the whole law, you might as well go through it. Through the whole law, because now's the time to change it.
Yeah, well, and that was the other thing, right, let's not. Send one, right, if we're going, this is gonna be, the trustees have to go through the process to update the local law, let's not just say, well, we'll do these three things now, and then we'll do it now, let's take the time. Go through it, do it, and.
To our best ability.
To our best ability, but, and we even mentioned this when we were developing it, is we knew we were gonna have to make some revisions to it, because it is a very brand new thing to the village here, and. I mean, it's worked, there's just, now there's a couple of lessons learned where we, we can make it better for, you know, the residents. Commercial or, or, you know, normal residents of the village to.
So you'll be sending that out.
Yep, I'll send updates out, I'll send some of my thoughts, some of Lisa's thoughts, Yamila's thoughts, and we'll get it on the agenda to talk about, we can talk about it offline too, so. I, I, I will share one thought too, and it was part of the, it was something that, you know, came up as part of, oh, you know, it would have been nice to. You know, do a presentation to the board, and maybe it's not this, but maybe it's just, you know, hey, I go to one of their board meetings, but. As Lisa and I chatted about things, we thought maybe it would be nice to talk to the trustees and see if we can agree to, you know. Twice a year, maybe we have a joint meeting just to talk about, you know, once kind of over the winter months, or maybe January when it's slower anyway, maybe to, you know, get some thoughts or vision about, you know, planning for. Spring, summer things, and then maybe, you know, I don't wanna say in the summer, because I just know everyone is so busy, but maybe again in the fall to. And just maybe a regularly scheduled thing, you know, here's what we're going to do twice a year, or maybe it's once a year in January, I don't know, but I think it would be good, we don't, we typically only meet with them when there's something. That we need to talk about, and I think there's always an opportunity for us to talk to them and them to talk to us about things, and I think that that would, you know, just collaboration wise is great, and it, I think it also helps us. You know, it would help us stay on our goals a little bit, I think if we're there, somebody would probably bring up the comp plan, whether we brought it up or Carolyn brought it up, but I think, you know, having that, that venue where we talk about it, I think would be good.
I always thought it would be very helpful if we, well, even if we just, we should be doing it ourselves, just take two things out of the comp plan that we wanna work on for the year. And fit them in somehow, which isn't always possible, depending on what's happening, but this year, we did have kind of a lot of time when it would have been possible.
It would have been good, yeah.
To, to more aggressively, so that we really just are focused on getting behind us.
That was the one thing I wanted to chat, Lorraine? Yes, anything you wanna bring up?
No.
You already asked about digging at the Econo Lodge.
I did, but the other thing is, Mike probably won't wanna hear this, is somebody gonna, how do, there's so many potholes. Is somebody going to, there's so many potholes over in the mall area. I mean, Gram Road West, first of all, all the way down to BJ's.
Oh, that mall.
Which mall, I was just. Oh, sorry, over there. And I happen to be over there driving around a lot this weekend, and it's just so bad. Anyway, the Gram Road West is bad all the way down to BJ's.
It isn't, no, not, no, that first part is fine up to about the Y.
And then it gets.
And then it's not.
And then around, and it's really bad down.
I know, but.
And around the mall, but not outside. It's really bad, like, is somebody, how do you, can you get them to fix it?
I think, well.
Send them an email.
Tell them, and I've had people complain, I had somebody complaining to me.
Well, they need to complain to the mall owner. Why don't you share with us how to get in touch with Gina?
Gina's not there anymore.
Oh, she isn't.
Did she just, did she just?
Send it to you, seriously, I hate to do that to you. But I'm just saying, Lorraine, just send, have, if people really are serious about making change, you should not be their spokes. They need to get in touch with him, that when he gets 10 calls finally, we can't do it without other people participating in this. That's the point. We've been after this for years, so it has to be, if you have a friend who is complaining, even Mike's name.
So we have to complain to Mike?
Yes.
They have to complain to Mike.
They need to complain.
And then Mike will pass that along to the mall.
Well, I'll register a complaint.
Yeah, so here's two right now, because.
Send him an email, so he can forward it, because it's critical mass, it really is.
And everyone knows in the village, right, this isn't some like secret that just the village members on the planning board and a couple other people know about, no, everyone knows there's a pothole there that looks like it'll eat your car.
If you're really feeling flush when you break your axle, you sue.
Well, actually, I did have to get a new tire room.
Put that in the email and said.
13, but it was a very expensive repair.
I will tell you a story, how a little thing can be very important. A cousin who had a house and they had a basement garage, and somebody hadn't done their stormwater sewer thing right, and whenever there was a storm, down came all this water and right into her basement where it took out. So initially, it wasn't as bad, but you know, with the change, so she files a claim with the town for her lawn mower or whatever damage she had, and they paid it, that was their, and because they acknowledged that there was a drainage problem. Well, as time went by, she lost her furnace, she finally, this was VW days when we all had like old cars, she buys a new car, a Saab, and there's a storm. She had to run out in the middle of the night and always put her car out on the road.
Oh, my God.
Her Saab was underwater, so guess what happened? She got a new car. So what I'm saying is, just the littlest thing, we just have to have the initiative to just send him a quick note saying, and say that you ruined your tire.
Well, I don't know whether it was because of a pothole there.
He's backing off.
No, wait, no, no. Because there was another one.
Oh, yeah.
There's some really bad ones on Route 13.
They're really bad ones all over, but I'm just saying, really.
I think it might have been, I don't know, it was one of them.
It doesn't help if it's the same people complaining, was my point.
So just so I have it clear, from the YMCA down to BJ's, it's a mall property?
Yes.
And all the way around, right?
The ring road.
The first part before the perimeter road's fine.
That's because we.
That's been fixed.
That's a temporary, aren't they going to redo that? I thought they just skin coated it.
I did actually have a question, which, oh, if we're ready to.
Or did you have anything else, sorry?
Oh, actually, as, as, I just had, this is really kind of maybe off topic, but an idea, when she, Hope made reference to the vacant eyesore.
Oh, guess what, I was going to bring that up.
And I just, I remember a long time ago, and I don't know if this went into effect, but I think the city of Ethica, I don't know if they did it or they were contemplating putting a tax on vacant homes because they were vacant.
I had, that's what I wrote.
Vacant after a certain period of time, because that restaurant thing has been there for a long time, and it's, it's just getting worse and worse. It's some, some way to push, you know, a vacancy tax or something like that, to push property owners to try and rent their property.
Can I condemn it?
Yeah.
I mean.
I was, exactly, that's exactly, I was going to bring up the same thing. That's exactly what I was going to bring up, because.
That thing looks like it's falling apart from the outside, I mean.
When I had someone who was living next door, who had a caregiver who was a hoarder, and people, neighbors were saying, what are you going to do about your neighbor? And it's like, ah, it's not my, you know, I came to, there is a need to keep things tidy if there's complaints, right? Is there any way that we can make improvements to this, is what I was going to ask? And also, to that, eyesore, she referred.
In the spring, I can, when somebody get out there and do something, I can go through with the property maintenance.
Okay.
The property maintenance can take care, as far as condemning it, it's very difficult to do because the building is, I don't see where the building is.
No, it's okay.
Unsound or anything like that.
The stuff outside.
It doesn't meet their requirement.
Areas that were unsafe before, he had, he had a front window, or a front door that was busted, and I wrote him up on that, because it was tight body, I had kids, hell got there and whatnot. The building's secure, it just looks like crap.
I know. Well, I'm wondering if there's something that we should be, because I'm always lately thinking, what would certain developers do? What should we be planning for? And this is one of them, is what do you do about something like that, which is just being, it's a derelict landlord.
Short of being unsafe, though, I mean.
Yeah, what are, what are, what are the.
I like having a field there, so I don't want to build anything if I'm the owner, so I'm not going to do anything. I mean, but that's different than the buildings.
But you know, the mechanicals were enclosed by that fence and now it's falling down, and that to me might be a safety, yeah, that's a safety issue, actually, and possibly.
Well, vacant field is fine.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, no.
So there's the answer to your question, Mike, they'll go out in the spring and see what, you know, at the very least, see if there's anything that under property maintenance has to be addressed on.
He did do, I did write him up on a bunch of things for it. He did go through and fix the Saab, and he fixed the front door. There were the trees that he had cut before the tree.
And left them live for a long.
He needs to keep up, you know, the frontage should be kept up nicely.
So I was just wondering, what, you know, what recourse do we have as a village when you have this situation? And do we need to address that in some way with our legislation?
Look into what other villages.
I don't know, I mean, you know.
I can, I can pull, we've been looking at the city of Ethica, what to do with some vacant properties, and there are some precedents out in, I want to say in California, but there aren't very many precedents, because unfortunately, fining vacancy doesn't really hold up. So there's, there's like one law that's, that works out in California, so I'll pull that up.
I just remembered seeing something about, I mean, it's probably from the 90s when there were a lot of vacancies on the Ethica Commons, and one property owner owned almost all or all of those properties, and it was his benefit to keep them vacant because he got.
Still is.
Great tax benefits.
He still does that there, the whole western end of the commons is vacant.
I haven't been to the commons in years, and I remember reading about discussion of imposing a vacancy tax or penalty. I don't know if it ever got passed or.
No, it never got passed because there isn't a strong precedent for it. And, and one of the things that happens is that when, you know, the economy goes up and down, you do end up having vacant places, and so.
Oh, you don't want to make it worse.
You don't, you make it worse on that particular property owner, so, you know, do you.
It's like putting somebody in jail because they're not paying rental money and then they lose their job.
Right.
Oh, good.
Now, one thing that we could talk about with the trustees is, do we want to shift a little bit of how we tax properties, or commercial properties? So for instance, like, you know, one of the most, you know, our standard way of taxing is you tax the improvement, right? So the land value doesn't really get taxed very much, but the improvement gets taxed.
How about the parking?
But you could, we could shift that, where we're like, okay, so, you know, we will tax you, we're going to consider your parking lot an improvement, and we will tax per square footage or per parking space or something like that. So we can change how we tax, and if we begin to tax more aggressively on the land, not just the improvement on the land, it actually pushes developers to do something with their site, because right now, he takes a loss for that and writes it off in his taxes, and it's. And he's making money off of all those people that are parking. Yeah.
Yep.
So it's.
Yeah, that's something to think about, too. I mean, right now, right, he's charging people the parking.
Oh, yeah, and they're, and you know, if you go there, if you go by there during prime time, you tax the parking lot.
Yes, it is.
I mean, I've been watching.
But you don't want to force people who have vacant property to, to build on it either.
Actually, we do, we do, quite frankly, the more, the more vacant properties get built up, the better tax revenue we have in the village.
That's true, there's.
The more density we have here, the better we get, we, our coffers are.
That's true. I'm just telling you about the idea, the aesthetics of having open, unbuilt, instead of using develop, unbuilt upon land.
Oh, that's great, but I'm thinking about like parking.
I'm not talking about that.
Yeah.
That structure that we're discussing here, I'm talking about just land that's unbuilt on.
Yeah, having green space, having, having kind of virgin land is wonderful, but when you have things like a parking lot that only ever gets, you know, partially used in a building that's not being used at all, we need to, we need to think about how we.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, if you can find something to pass along, I think.
Yep, I can certainly do that.
Yeah, if you find it.
So I can find, I need to look, vacancy.
Oh, and I did see, I also saw today coming down the road, I never remember the, that goes by Gaslight Village, a number of trucks.
Uptown Road.
Uptown Road, yeah, a number of trucks that looks like they're performing some work.
Oh, yeah, I saw the piles of sheet rock and stuff.
Wait, this is by the other side here, thank you.
This is for the asbestos.
Oh, so they're getting to it.
That's what I looked on.
Okay.
Yeah, there was piles of shea.
And hazmat, it's not shea rock, but, you know.
Young dudes with towers on it.
So are the people now able to get their documentation and some of their possessions out of there?
That's.
Next, I guess, huh?
Yes, I haven't heard anybody complain about not being able to get their stuff. I've heard people who have sent me emails about only having a few days to be able to go in and get their stuff, and I've been working heavily on that.
Okay.
I'm not sure that the village, there's a whole.
As much to do about that, I know, we can't really.
We can't micromanage what happens over there, there are due diligence.
Right. Well, it's a mess.
Lisa?
Nope, he covered it. I was going to bring up the eyesore thing about what we do about properties that are beginning to really run down and stuff. I did actually want to ask, though, well, I will talk to you about it later, about a piece of property that has a tree that's.
Yeah, I'll save that for afternoon.
Yeah, I'll get to.
Not a lot, but actually, this is thinking about what you were saying about this property and how we might be able to deal with some of these things. Have we ever considered doing a stormwater assessment?
What do you mean?
Like a fee.
For what reason?
The more, wait, the more impervious, the more impervious space you have, the more impacts on our stormwater systems, right, and on our sewer systems. And so, like, one of the things that certain municipalities in the county are doing is they're actually starting to count the square footage of how much impervious area you have, and every property is allowed a certain amount of impervious area. And then, anything beyond that gets a fee attached to it that helps pay for stormwater management.
I've never heard it discussed.
Well, we've always encouraged people to not have any more impervious, but we haven't set any, like, parking lots, things, you know, like, but you can only have so many square foot, I suppose it's merits looking at it some.
System had to have been set up for what is basically there now, if there was any changes to it, just like we do.
Well, the world has changed, is the thing.
Yeah, that is.
The world has changed, we're getting storms in a way that we've never gotten.
Then we'd be looking in depth on every property in the village.
Yeah.
But who's going to pay for all of that, looking at every single property?
Well, as they come up, though, I suppose if you have something in that, you know, as it.
You're talking about biting off a huge amount of time and money for everything. I mean, the actual MS4, or what we have to do for the E C is already upgraded all of their criteria, which is what I'm going through right now, and I'm going around, as it is, I'm mapping out all of the stormwater facilities that are right now, trying to monitor those. But D E C can't get, I can't see how they can get any more strict than they are at this point, so I don't.
You should keep us updated, I want you.
Yeah, I mean, like.
But it's, well, there's all sorts of possibilities, but we got to be realistic about what we can accomplish here, I think, yeah.
County G I S is starting to, to do, make those measurements for municipalities.
That's what I would say, so let's see where they go with that, keep us updated so that, because eventually it may be what happens for everyone, and then it would be, it's always easier to not be quite.
Be the first.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, especially given our situation here a little bit, but, yeah.
But that might be a way around putting pressure on the landowner who's letting their space go derelict because they do have a large surface parking lot.
Which, I'm reminded of one other question, I think I asked this before, but I don't recall the answer. What are the plans for the Trip Hotel?
I forgot about that place.
Same as the last time you asked me.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't remember what your answer was.
I have no idea.
I mean, I assume it's.
I know, condemned in a really bad parking lot.
I assume it's vacant.
Is it any same status it was before, health violations, health department violations? I have violations on it. So you can't do anything in there until those are cleaned up?
They can't reopen until they've completed these violations. As long as it's unoccupied, you don't have to do these violations because they're interior violations.
Why doesn't he just sell it?
So they, well, that because, to your point, is they get a tax break for it.
Yes, and it's the guy that owns.
I know, but.
Just going to end up being another Chinese restaurant.
Yeah, it already is, actually. I think it's been, I kept, for years I thought, what's going on in that place, you know?
I mean, yeah. It was really bad. Yeah, I think frankly, if we, if we want to encourage people who are holding on to their properties to do something, let's look at how we zone the properties. So for instance, if we, you know, we're talking about wanting to zone multifamily somewhere, if we zone multifamily here, that certainly sweetens the pot for the Chinese restaurant to go away and something else to go in there because suddenly it becomes really valuable.
I see what you're saying. That is a very big topic.
It's a big topic.
I think it's getting a little late for that.
Anything else, Yamilah?
No.
I will mention the one thing, so I will send out the notes about the tree plan. We can discuss those at the next meeting if we have time. The other thing I would like to do is at least take the chart of uses and everything and delve out chunks of them to people to have people start looking at them. Maybe it takes us longer to get through the stuff for the tree law, maybe it doesn't, but at least in between meetings, we can be looking at whatever section is assigned to people, and I'll take a stab at that and we'll see how that goes. And then we can, you know, once we're done with the tree law or once we feel like we have enough time to talk about the chart of uses, but we should make progress on that.
Yeah.
Natalie?
I sent around the lot line adjustment law after the last meeting. I didn't get any responses back from anybody.
Trustee.
This one?
Yes.
Yes, I did get it, I did print it out, at least.
But that's it.
Mike's the main guy that needs to give us advice on this, Mike.
I mean, next meeting you will have a special permit for the next section of the mall for a self-storage, self-storage area.